Space we're gonna need for the people to accommodate us for the next twenty to thirty years. Along with that, we have our existing courthouse study. This is the one that we just did at the direction of the commission that is the technical analysis, the geotech, the comparison, the programmings for the Eddy County courthouse. We also have our economic impact analysis that was prepared by Mr. Kyle. That's part of this package and we also have courthouse routes and travels travels that we kind of did a study from different points in the county to different projects so we can take a look at that. Kind of real brief history as we go into this. We also have a very detailed history on the county website if anyone want to go take a look at that. It's real detailed. There's a lot of research went into that and you can see that at the website. The original courthouse was constructed in eighteen ninety-two. In the nineteen thirty-eight, thirty-nine, the original courthouse was demolished and this is after several add-ons and plumbings and remodels. But the original eighteen ninety-two courthouse, the rest of it was demolished for the new Santa Fe style structure in the nineteen thirty-eight, nineteen thirty-nine. In nineteen ninety, another major remodel on the second and third floors was conducted and completed. And then in two thousand fifteen, that's when the sheriffs moved out to the new building on fifteen oh-one Carls Road. So there's been several major projects, add-ons, upgrades to the project over the years and this is what that represents. So as we get into recent events, how we came here to be here today. We uh, we first presented this to the commission on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four in the commission meeting at which after outcry of community concern, we after the presentation, the commission directed us to hold town halls to address any concerns and allow the public to come be heard. We held those public town halls on the twenty-fourth and twenty-ninth of April. And then as we brought this back on the May seventh meeting, we brought it back as three separate agenda items. And as we re-presented this, the first two or the actually the second two projects, the administration building and the detention center were approved to proceed and the courthouse was tabled with the direction given to pursue further studies, analysis and bring this information back to the commission and that brings us to today. So this is gonna go through our research and our analysis that we conducted. This is basically gonna be summarizing the Eddy County existing courthouse and renovation plan and the economic impact analysis. So our technical analysis and summaries. This basically covers three topics, the programming, the structural and the geotech. For the programming, essentially what they did is they took the master plan and they took the existing room in the courthouse and they compared this to each other to see what space we could have to accommodate the spaces that we need. You can see the comparisons there. The district court, which is the courtrooms, judge chambers, the jury deliberations suites, jury holdings, etc. Essentially the court operations. The judicial center had a plan ninety-five thousand six hundred and seventy square feet. The courthouse will allow fifty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-five square feet. The sheriff's office, which is your lobby screening areas, Sally port, secure areas and corridors. The judicial center has a plan seventy-two hundred square feet and the courthouse have sixty-six hundred square feet. The building support, this is your public area, staff areas, main mechanical, public or public areas is essentially what you need to take out of that. The judicial center has a plan thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty square feet. The courthouse has thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-three square feet. The reason for this is as we go through this, you'll see that in the courthouse, we've planned several meeting rooms, conference rooms, legislative meeting rooms. And it's really increased the area of public areas in the courthouse as was the request of the commission. So um, this also will be a open to the community type layout and the secure areas are more on one side and it's more of a public area on the other and you'll see as we get there. The structural findings was that the courthouse is in good structural shape. It's structurally sound. All the concrete, the foundations are sound. It it was a, we had no concerns when it came to the structural ability of the building. Along with this, if it's decided to continue the operations at the courthouse, the plan will be to not alter more than ten percent of the lateral structural integrity of the building, which will not trigger the twenty twenty-one IBC building code, which will require us to update all of the building structure. Also with that, if it's decided to keep the courthouse where it is, there'll be an expansion joint put between between the new add-on and the existing courthouse so as the structure of the old building and the structure of the new construction expand and contract as they do with the temperatures we see in Carlsbad, it won't affect the structural ability of either structure. The geotech is exactly what we expected. Sandy silt's clay. Groundwater was at twelve to thirteen feet below ground surface. This is gonna present the opportunity for challenge as we go through this project if it's decided to do so. Subgrade prep could be difficult as it's a low density soil. We also won't be able to do shallow foundations. We're gonna have to go with a deep spread foundation for the building and we're also gonna have to include some pier and piles to go down to solid bedrock or not necessarily a bedrock but a structural foundation that'll be able to hold up the structure of the building. So. Any questions on the technical before we move on to the? So the economic. I've, I've provided some of the primary quotes that were allotted to in the economic analysis. Essentially, if it stays or it goes, there's no adverse effect on downtown. The courthouse and the courthouse operation is not going to make or break the downtown businesses, restaurants, anything that's down there. As it relates to the courthouse operation. Now, coincidentally is what we found in the study that there is a potential for positive impact for moving it down south. The potential for business growth and development on the south side of town and also revitalization of downtown around a repurposed courthouse is what we've kind of seen and found with the economic study. So if it's, if it stays, I mean, there will be some impacts obviously during construction and we'll get into this, but as it pertains, once it's said and done, if it stays, it goes or if nothing happens, it's not gonna affect the downtown business. Our call about local business stakeholders. So as part of the impact analysis, we conducted interviews. We went and interviewed ten local businesses and restaurant owners from the downtown district. We interviewed nine courthouse operational stakeholders. This would be our sheriffs, detention courts, DA's. And then we interviewed two community organizations that were directly involved with the downtown district. So this is kind of the summarization of what the feedback was from them. The primary concern on everyone's mind is parking. The downtown parking was the first subject that we talked about with every interview that we conduct. Like we kind of just stated, the courthouse operations do not affect downtown businesses. The business leaders of downtown would very much like to see a, the courthouse centered around a revitalization project. This community already ended and accessible. They want the courthouse to be the center of downtown and be the part of the project that brings life back to the downtown. So that's, that's summarizing what we, they were very engaged in this. They were very excited about this and the opportunity and the potential. So it was, it was good to go and talk to our business owners and our business folks in the community and kind of get their input and they were, they were really excited about this. So as we go into our operational stakeholders, we, we felt this was important to go feel what our staff, our court staff and hear what their concerns were. So our district courts, this would be our, our judges and their staff, they're very much concerned about the accessibility and the time it takes to get to either location just for families and to go home and check on stuff and to get to appointments and to be in town. So our detention was security and safety of their staff, the public and the detainees. They also have a concern that if it's decided to keep the courthouse downtown and we, as it's already been approved to move the detention center, it'll be the increased liability for increased transportation that we're moving them now across town and not just across the street. The sheriffs, as we talked with them about the security of the building, the security of the people in it, they're very concerned about the layout and the way the existing courthouse is and how people access the building. They're also concerned about the holding of multiple detainees at the same time and the movement of them through the building and the interaction of the public. There's not secure holding or flow through the existing courthouse. Another issue with the sheriffs that was brought is if something were to happen, if there was an emergency, if there was a need for backup or support. As much as our law enforcement entities back up each other and support each other, they're still throughout town, throughout the county, their backup is not readily available and it's usually five, ten, fifteen minutes away. So that was another concern they had if there was ever a situation with a high profile case or something that were to happen at the courthouse. The district attorney, once again, we talked about parking. They have issues with their parking and existing building. Their other concern is they don't have enough sufficient space for the workload that they're experiencing. You know, the team's done really well with providing them additional space and doing some remodels, but they're still needing to grow their operation and need to have people, they've set up several that work from home on a regular basis. So. Also, one of their deals was they talked about the consolidation opportunity, consolidate municipal magistrate and district courts into one facility. And this will be very much a convenience and an efficiency factor for them as they prosecute all of them. On the courts, this was a, this was a good conversation and, and good points, you know, and they, once again, they're out of space. We need more space for more people for the workload that we're seeing in Eddy County. We talked about security again for his people, for the people that work for the courts, for the judges. That's a concern that was brought up by the courts and then also a consolidation effort because of the New Mexico courts oversees magistrate and the district. So it would again be an opportunity for the courts to back up each other with staffing and just have the, be in the same building. So. The city calls about it. We've talked to them and had a few conversations with them. Very much support consolidation. They have not made any promises or agreements, but we seriously consider the partnership of moving a municipal court to if and when we decide to move it to the complex. So the city is also very active in wanting to do a revitalization of downtown around the cavern theater and feel that the center of that is the courthouse. And then again, we discussed parking for any of the major events, cavern fest, when they get the cavern theater up and going, parking is going to be an issue if we don't proceed with some of the projects that we're gonna discuss. And then lastly, the Eddy County, this is us and Trenton, our building maintenance on the existing building is gonna continue to be an issue. It's gonna continue to be an increasing cost if we don't plan and remediate the building here soon. Then we have some of those planned, but this is something that's gonna need to be addressed in the near future if it's decided to move it. So access to the fifth judicial district. This is a, another part of this that we looked at is it was a primary concern during the town halls. What we've come to realize is the majority of our court cases and hearings are now held virtually. It's one of the good things that came out of COVID. So between the preference, efficiency and ease of virtual meetings, this has drastically reduced the necessity for in-person meetings and this is holding over to the courts. We don't have a exact figure or formula that we could calculate this, but um, this is how they're predominantly doing business today. Again, as we bring up, parking is a predominant issue for the courthouse and the court operations. This is another necessity for, or that makes virtual meetings a easier option. Another concern with access to the courthouse is secure parking for the judges, for our staff. You know, it's a, it is a serious concern of how our judges access the building and the lack of security as they access and egress the building. As part of this and we'll reiterate this further in the process, in the, in the presentation, we have had conversations with the city about providing a regular transit route to the new county complex, not only for the courthouse but also for the detention center. Distance and travel times to project locations. So what we did here is we took a centralized location, which if I'm being honest, it's a Chevron in each location of town, Artesia, Loving, because everyone in the morning goes by Chevron, gets coffee and a burrito and then comes to work. So. We took the centralized locations of the Chevrons and we measured the distance and the drive times to each project location. So from Carlsbad North, which is the Chevron at Orchard and Canal, if you go via San Jose, it's six point four miles and thirteen minutes to the judicial center. If it's, if you go Mesa Boyd, it's six point eight miles and fifteen minutes. Now from Carlsbad North to the courthouse, it's one point seven miles and five minutes. So we're talking about eight minutes, ten minutes every day. Double up sixteen, twenty. Carlsbad South from the Chevron, that's across from the Ocatillo Hotel, we're one point nine miles to the judicial center in three minutes and you're three point three miles via San Jose and seven minutes to the courthouse. If you're coming from Artesia and this is from the Chevron that's right there on the south side of town, you're thirty-eight point eight miles via the west bypass and thirty-nine minutes to judicial complex. To the courthouse, you are, and if you actually take the most efficient route, which is to come down the Happy Valley Loop and come in West Texas, you're thirty-six point one miles and thirty-eight minutes. If you come through the middle of town, which is Pearson Canal, it's the exact same time. So Loving, if you come up and cut across Derrick Road, you're twelve point three miles and sixteen minutes. And if you come right through the middle of town, you're twelve point four miles and sixteen minutes to the courthouse. So that's your drive times, your access to the project locations. Any questions on the research and information summarized before we get into the project options? So as we've assessed this, we've come up with two viable options. And kind of like I've said, this is the Eddy County courthouse and this will be a construction and an add-on project. The intent would is that the existing courthouse provides forty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-six square feet. We would be constructing a new add-on of sixty-five thousand six hundred and forty-seven square feet for a facility total of a hundred and twelve thousand square feet, thirty-three some change. This would accommodate the district judges, the staff services, district attorney, legislative meeting areas and offices. If this option is decided, understand that this eliminates the opportunity for magistrate municipal court to come into the facility. The other option that we had previously presented is the new judicial center at the Eddy County complex. There's a plan ninety-eight thousand eight hundred square foot for the district courts. That is the district courts and the support services alone. There's an additional twenty-two thousand two hundred square feet for two magistrate courts and an additional twenty thousand square feet for municipal courts, which if it's decided to proceed with that, we'll negotiate the agreements and the times and the participation at that level. This will bring the total facility at the judicial center to a hundred and forty-one thousand square feet. So the next several slides are the layouts and designs of the two options. And we'll kind of, you can see as we go through these, this is the layout of the courthouse. The intent is to construct the sixty-five thousand square foot on the north side of the building where the existing parking lot is. This would change the front area of the entrance to the courthouse to the west and there would also be access points for the public in the existing historical doors. If you go next to the first floor, the yellow here, that would be your court clerks. The red back here is a Sally port and holding cells and secure entrance for detainees and the court staff. And this would be their own individual elevator to securely access each individual courtroom before. As we come in here, the pink area is a jury selection services. So as they come in and we have jury trials, they'd come in, they'd go there. That's where we do the jury selection. The jurors will report and that's where they can be taken care of. The other area back here is a court services and then you have some mechanical rooms and some stuff down here. As we move into the second floor, on the new add-on, this would essentially be a courtroom one and two. You can see the red, which is the secured holding and flow. And then you can see the purple line, which is the secured flow for, I apologize. The green line is the judges access. I didn't go through that on the first one. So I apologize. This right here is a secure parking area for the judges and the staff. And as they come in and park, this will be a gated area. And then this area right here in this green is their own private elevator and access, which will provide them secure access and egress to the building. So now as we go to the second floor, you can see the green corridors, the judges secured flow to their offices and to their courtrooms. The red is for the detainees. The blue is all public areas. The darker green over here is all the DA's office for their program space. We also have a public area right here for a voting center and then this is a small museum for the courthouse. As we go to the third floor, this is courtrooms three and four, exact same layout on top of each other. This is the remaining DA. This will be for our DA managers, Mr. Melvin, Ms. Lou's and their conference room. We also provided a legislative meeting room with support rooms back here, offices for legislators, two conference rooms that can be used and scheduled by anyone that needs them. And these would also be public areas. As we go to the fourth floor, this would be an eventual courtroom five when and if necessary. And then the fourth floor on the existing courthouse, we would remodel to executive offices. So the intent would be is as we, if it's decided to proceed with this, we would shell this out. We would not finish this out until a fifth judge was necessary and then we'd go in and finish this project out. So then we're gonna move into some of the renderings that were provided and this is what it would look like if this is decided and constructed. This would be a view looking from Canal Street. Too many. This would be a view kind of catty corner and this would be, so Carlsbad National Bank would be right over here on this side of the road. This is looking from the, I think I went the wrong way. Yes, I did. There's a look from the back. So this would kind of be looking across Canyon Street at the back end. You can see the secure parking and the Sally port. So. Any questions on this one? Okay, so we're gonna move into the judicial complex center at the Eddy County complex. This is very much what we presented back in April. This is a layout of the current complex as we have it planned. This will be where the admin building is located, the judicial center, and this is gonna be where the detention center is. You can also see that there's a secured access egress here for detainees. So instead of driving, they'll walk across to the courthouse. We very much have gone over this in the past. We'll just kind of look through it. The DA's office, this is also the areas here, the court services and DWI. We're gonna touch on this here later, but understand that these areas are programmed into this facility that are not accounted for in the courthouse. The areas over here, this would be planned for the magistrate courts. On the second floor, this is courtrooms one through five. We would again shell out courtroom five until it's necessary. And if it's decided that municipal court comes, we would essentially second floor over the magistrate court and that's where municipal magistrate would figure out who goes where based on the necessity and the flow of public. And then we've had some revised renderings put together for what this building will look like if it's decided to go. So and we'll have a discussion too about who the statue is right here in the middle. I think we got some ideas. Tough crowd, tough crowd.
I was hoping so.
Tough crowd. Alright, so. As part of the judicial center project, we have a proposed Eddy County courthouse renovation. The intent for this, if it's decided to proceed with the judicial center, is we would begin an exterior remediation project immediately. That would begin January twenty twenty-five. As everyone knows, it was brought up and everyone can see it's been, we have several of the woods rotting out. It's kind of, it's, it's looking pretty poorly. So we would begin this exterior mediation project immediately. The interior renovation, as we're about to see, we would begin that as the judicial center is completed and we transfer everyone out there. This, I wanna make, I wanna tell everyone, we have no formal agreements with anyone or promises. This is strictly ideas and opportunities. So there's some, there's some labels on here and we haven't talked to anybody. We haven't made any agreements, handshake deals or nothing. So with this project, we'd include courthouse museum, legislative meeting rooms, banquet hall, voting center and galleries, areas and offices for local organizations, official office space for state agencies and then a large public restroom. So this will be the first floor. You can see we have areas for some of our local official offices here. We also provided a larger for our state offices. You know, our state offices in Carlsbad are kind of scattered and far few between. We office the state engineer out at my building in public works. You know, DOT doesn't really bring any official folks down because they don't really have a place to put them. We actually had a discussion, the state land office has moved around two or three times here in the last couple of years. So having the opportunity to provide them a official office and a place to work and interact with the public would be very beneficial to Carlsbad and Eddy County. The red area down here is our public restroom. This is something that the city's been requesting for a while. When we have our large public venues, the cavern fest, the live parade, the farmer's market, they've very much been wanting a bathroom that can accommodate folks that are there and not just the scattered porta johns around the parking lot and there. So this is something that we would have the opportunity to provide. Moving to the second floor, some more official space for another, you know, official offices. Another thing that we really tried to do with this renovation is not if we go and do the courthouse project for the courts, a lot of the projects and renovations that we've already done will essentially be for naught. We'll have to demo them out and repurpose the space. We very much tried to fit this repurposed building within the existing spaces. So with that, the new courtroom that we're working on right now for Judge Finger, we'd convert that to a voting center and a gallery. And it's time to vote. We go in there and have our voting center set up. When it's not, we can make it an art gallery for, you know, kids or whatever we decide to put in there. We've also allotted some space for the historical society. I think they attended some of our meetings and it's my understanding that they don't have anywhere to house their office right now. So we provide them some space. Another conference room and that's another purpose of this is, this is not just official conference room. This is anyone that needs a scheduler to come use it. This, Carlsbad and Eddy County has a real lack of meeting spaces for official purposes and for anything. So we'd make this available to the public. With the third floor, we would convert the historic courtroom into an official legislative meeting room. You know, every time we have a large LFC meeting or we have a big NMDOT commission meeting, we try to squeeze them in somewhere and it's usually pretty tight fit. So being able to provide an official meeting space for our legislative and our state partners would be a very much benefit to Carlsbad and Eddy County. Executive legislative offices, conference rooms, across the hall from the legislative meeting rooms, we'd put a courthouse museum. We'd actually go in there and put historical items from the courthouse that we've, I mean, we have the cowboy carvings down there. We have the large pictures. It'd be a very cool area to actually go and remember some of the history of this whole, this building. And then we go over here with these two courtrooms and we'd make this a banquet hall. We can do this as these are just non-structural walls. We'd keep the structural pillars in here and we'd be able to open up this whole area into probably really two banquet halls with a expandable wall in the middle of it. And then the fourth floor, again, we turn this into executive offices wherever that we need, who needed it and we could lease that out. So. Any questions on that project before we get into logistics? Any questions on that project before we get into logistics? Okay. So. The logistics of either one of these projects, I very much want to bring this up because it needs to be understood what the intent and how we would proceed with doing these projects. So for the judicial facility, if it's decided to proceed with that, we would procure design. We'd proceed with the design, we'd proceed with construction. As the building was completed, um, it'd be essentially a simple transition. Now with that, and I've already mentioned, if it's decided to proceed with the judicial center, we would begin an exterior remediation project of the existing courthouse immediately. It needs, it needs help and needs help now, so. That would very much be the intent to put that into budget and proceed with that next fiscal year. Once the judicial center is complete, we plan and renovate the existing Eddie County courthouse. In whatever manner we've decided, we've put together and decided the best purpose for that, but we've started a renovation project that we just discussed. As part of this, once the new detention center is complete, we would plan to partner with the city to demo the existing detention center to whatever capacity and provide parking. Either be that a large parking lot or a parking facility, parking garage. So. For the courthouse. This is the one where it starts to become opportunity for, to overcome challenges. We would begin a design. And as we begin construction, we would get twelve to fifteen months into the new construction of the add-on facility. Sixty-five thousand square foot add-on. Once we got to that point, we would go displace the courthouse and the courthouse operations. We would plan accommodations and we will go assist the courts. And we will displace them for the next eighteen to twenty-four months. As we go in and renovate the existing courthouse to the planned facility that we pretended. We have options for the displacement. We have no agreements, um, as we need a decision before we go start making some of those deals. I'm just gonna, it's not going to be cheap and it's going to be inconvenient for the next twenty-four months. And they need to understand that's what's going to happen if it's decided to stay downtown. Once the courthouse project's complete, we would transition them back into the new facility. And then as before, once the new detention center is complete, we'd partner with the city and we'd, uh, demo and plan a parking lot, parking garage. So, this brings us to our project schedule. This was very much not represent, or meant to get into the finer details of what this is, this is just to represent how long this is essentially going to take and how this will flow. The judicial center. And you, you see, and, uh, we will discuss the, the projects that are going to be associated with this. So, we have the judicial center project, the exterior remediation project, the detention center project, the courthouse renovation, the demo and the parking. And these are all represented by the lines on the calendar. The judicial center essentially start in January twenty twenty-five and the parking will be concluded by December of twenty twenty-nine. The courthouse. This will be the courthouse project, the displacement, the detention center, the demo, the parking garage. This will start January twenty twenty-five and it'll conclude January, or June of twenty thirty. And I say that and keep that in mind because we're going to talk about the parking here in a minute as part of this project. So our project cost estimates. For the judicial center. These are very much representative of what we previously presented you in April. The judicial center will be a hundred and forty-nine million dollars. And that is with the potential revenue of twenty-three million dollars for the magistrate and twenty-one million dollars for the municipal courts. Which brings in if it's decided to do the district court only, it'll be a hundred and six million dollar project. The exterior remediation of the courthouse, we're planning as a four-point-eight million dollar project. If it's decided to proceed with the judicial center, the detention center will be a hundred and thirty-five million dollars, as previously presented and approved. The courthouse renovation project will be twenty-one million dollars. Detention demo, three-point-nine million and the parking structure will be nine-point-six million. And we broke this out over the fiscal years for the next six years. For the courthouse. The courthouse project alone is intend, or is estimated to be a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. The displacement cost, and this is on a very, make sure nothing goes wrong, seven-point-six million. The detention center is a hundred and forty-nine million dollars. Now let me explain that. You'll notice that the detention center for the projects is different. And the reason being, and I kind of touched on this earlier, is currently, there's room and area planned in the existing, or not in the existing, but in the judicial center for the DWI and for the court services, which is essentially our alternate sentencing units. If it is decided to proceed with the courthouse, we will need to accommodate those services at the detention center at the complex. So we'll be adding sixteen thousand square feet to the detention center if it's decided to proceed with the courthouse, that's the difference in those two prices. And then you have the detention demo, which is three-point-nine million and the parking's nine-point-six million, and we also provided the breakout over the fiscal years. Oops, sorry, one too many. So. This is your budget comparison. What we did here, in our review with Roberta and Finance, we wanted to compare this back to the presentation that was presented in April. So for the judicial center, these are the numbers that were presented in April for the complex. Your site civils eight-point-nine million, your judicial center is one, a hundred and forty-nine million, which includes magistrate and municipal. And this is the expenditure. Your detention center is a hundred and thirty-five million. Administration building's forty-six million, your facilities and OEM building's seven-point-two million. Okay? So we've provided two budgets, we've provided a product, a complex and a projects. So, that would be your complex budget. With that, the exterior of your courthouse on your project would be four-point-eight million, your courthouse renovations twenty-one million. Demo's three-point-nine million and parking garage is nine-point-six, for a total of thirty-nine million dollars. And a complex total of thirty, three-hundred-and-forty-seven million dollars. Okay? For the courthouse, we've provided a comparison for the complex budget. Your site civil's still eight-point-nine million, there will be no expenditure on the judicial center. Your detention center then goes to a hundred and forty-nine million. Your administration building stays the same at forty-six million, your facilities and OEM building stays at seven-point-two. Your project budget at that point for the courthouse becomes a hundred and thirty-nine million. Displacement cost is seven-point-six million. Your detention demo, three-point-nine, your parking garage is nine-point-six, for a total of a hundred and sixty million for projects. And your complex budget would then be two-hundred-and-twelve million. So your strategy totals and comparisons. So your expenditure for the judicial center would be three-hundred-and-eighty-seven million total for projects and complex with a potential revenue of forty-four million for the magistrate and municipal courts. For a total of three-hundred-and-forty-two million. Your courthouse expenditure with complex and projects would be three-hundred-and-seventy-three million with no potential revenue. For three-hundred-and-seventy-three million with a delta of thirty-point-eight million dollars. Okay? So our project fund bond, bonding. We wanted to very much bring this back because it's still very much the intent with either direction that we go to bond the courthouse project. The judicial project will be the only one that's financed through the bonding. The cash contribution will be the county cash that's on hand that's already going towards the complex. Understand, and we talked about this and presented this before, that the bonding will not affect property tax rates. It will not increase the bonding. The bonding will utilize existing county gross receipts, but it will not increase the rates. Also, this bonding does not require an election to approve. Okay? We can get more into the debt service if you'd like to, but it's very much similar to what we presented before. This is the option that, uh, we reviewed with Roberta and we very much like, and it's a multiple draw on the bonding and it can be revised and decided as we know what our revenues are per year that we draw on it. So. Any questions on the scheduling and costs before we move into points and closings? Okay. So. A few supplemental points that we really want to kind of make as we close this thing. Carlsbad Transit. We have initiated conversations with Carl, the city of Carlsbad. And the potential for having a regular route to the complex will be very much feasible. For the courthouse and for the detention center, it's not just a courthouse deal, this is also for detention. Concern that as we release folks, they need a way to get back into town, so this is something that we very much started the conversation and as we get to the appropriate time, we'll finalize what it looks like and what it's going to take to provide that route and transportation back to town. The parking during courthouse construction. This is a concern. We've brought up parking several times during this presentation, it's a concern of everyone we've talked to. And we're going to make it worse if we proceed with the courthouse project downtown. We're going to eliminate the parking, um, next to the courthouse, so the staff's really going to have, it's going to be a issue for the twelve to fifteen months while we got them there. And then understand that, it's going to be pretty limited until we get the detention center complete, transitioned and a new parking facility and lot in place. The construction of downtown, the impact it's going to have on downtown. The commission and really everyone needs to understand what it's going to take to construct what I've just presented. We are going to, if it is decided to proceed with this, we are going to have heavy construction in downtown Carlsbad for the next three to four years on the courthouse lawn. It's going to require cranes, it's going to require laydown areas, it's going to require concrete trucks, it's going to require steel, I mean, it's going to be heavy construction for the next three to four years. The concern is how much it's going to have an impact on the current events of downtown Carlsbad. Cavern Fest, our parades, farmer's market. It might be worth it in the end in six years. But understand for the four to five, six years that it's going to take to do it, it's going to be cumbersome. And it's going to be inconvenient. The EV charging stations. We've presented this to commission, everyone very much understands the concern with the EV charging stations. This additional cost, as we very much have a contingency and these will be covered, could present the potential for increased costs that we have not presented yet for EV charging stations, this is something that's pretty new. So, that is a concern that we're working through. And it'll depend on the decision of the commission on how that's going to affect us in this upcoming legislative session to see the outcome of what happens to EV charging stations. The food court. It's been a concern with not only the courthouse, but everybody that's moving down south of town that, you know, we won't have time to get to lunch, we won't have time to get anywhere. As it provides the opportunity for Southern Carlsbad to develop, something that we're considering doing with one of our architects, we're going to provide a food court just in the, uh, south side of the Fire Services Park out there by the highway. It's kind of a barren area and we're looking at providing areas that they come hook up, put some food trucks, put a food court in there. So that's folks work in that complex, work in the industrial complex. They can go, go to lunch and we'll figure out what that looks like as we get there. But very much that we can walk there and have a really nice area of shades, people to go eat and then walk back to work. We've kind of touched on this already, but our existing renovation projects. If we proceed with the courthouse option, a lot of the renovation and remodel projects that we've completed and are currently working on, when we get to that point, will be demoed. So the money that we've put towards them, the efforts that we've put toward them, will be short-lived. The last point is the current complex projects are stalled. We've got to about the furthest point we can on the current projects without a decision. We've got a very good working floor plan with the detention center. We have a very good working floor plan with the administration building, but we need to understand what is going where so that we can continue with the civil and structural designs of the buildings as they kind of work together and also with the utility tie-ins. So our projects are stalled until we have a decision. So. With that, we'll move into a closing. We've presented our studies and our analysis, as provided by our professional consultants. We've assessed and prepared two very feasible project strategies for our judicial operations of Eddie County that have addressed the major liabilities and concerns. And we've presented conceptual plans, cost budgets, plans, estimates, um, for each strategy. So, and I'm going to break the cardinal rule of PowerPoint, so I'm going to read this last statement, so. Either project strategy will present unique challenges as is to be expected with projects of this caliber. But each strategy is also very much constructible and attainable. The county is excited about the forthcoming opportunities to set goals, strive for milestones and achieve successes never attempted in any county's history. The county is confident that either strategy, when worked to full completion, will provide a judicial facility that is sustainable, mutually beneficial and operationally efficient. A facility that Eddie County and the Fifth Judicial District Court can be proud of to utilize to serve justice in Eddie County for years to come. Thank you.
Jason, great presentation, but let's get started, questions?
Where to start is this, I was commenting period or?
Yeah.
I think to me, it's a no-brainer. With what's going to happen downtown, we're going to displace Main Street and everybody else. The sheriff's department's going to down there, jail's going to be down there. The magistrate court, municipal court, the other court can also be down there. And I think it needs to be, this is a, this is an add-on fix. I am not in favor of changing the entire look of that wonderful little building with a bunch of concrete, the facade will be gone forever. If we do try to keep that courthouse down there, it will take longer. I just don't see it working to the benefit of Carlsbad. And the displacement is something that I've heard mentioned. The court is going to move either way. Whether it's for a short period of time over the next few years to some building somewhere in Carlsbad or at the end of this project to the new courthouse down south, but the court is going to move either way to go. I think we wait and move into a new courthouse downtown.
Anybody else have anything to add?
I just have a couple of questions. I went back and I reviewed my notes from the town hall meetings and when I had first, uh, met with Judge Riley to go and tour the courthouse. And in the subsequent phone calls I received after that. It was brought up, people were asking, why do we need this? Why do we need the expansion, you know, on this scale of the existing courthouse? And, you know, it seemed like there was a lot of unutilized space in the courthouse now as it is. Did you have an opportunity to kind of look at that or talk with anyone about that?
Yes, very much so. You know, as early as we go to the purpose of why we want to do this, what, what's the necessity for it? And that's been a question that's been asked a couple of times. It's very much a security of our folks, our staff, the judges. There are some Eddie County is evolving as we grow. The, you know, sheriff gets up here almost every meeting and talks about the situations and the dynamics that we've never had to deal with before, the amount of drug trafficking that our guys are working their best to keep off the streets, the violent crimes. We are very much evolving into a larger Metropolitan area with our industry. So with that comes the negative side of that, the more serious crimes that come with the more increased security risk. Providing that security to our judges, to me at least, is paramount. We need to provide secure access, our security for our staff, our detention. The ability to provide the, our sheriffs, at least help them as much as we can with the facility that they can secure and, and. Manage the people that are in it. Is very much a concern and a necessity. Keeping the flows of the different people that are there, the official staff, the judges, the public, the detainees. That is not a flow that is supposed to intermingle and mix as everyone's getting to the courtroom to have these proceedings. So having these projects, these renovations are very much necess- necessity to have a courthouse to. Provide the justice that we need for, you know, Eddie County and operations that we're seeing and being required to provide. As far as the existing spaces in the courthouse go, you know, we've really looked at that and it. The challenge that the existing courthouse provides is. It is still very much an old structure. Even though it's been added on to and it's been remodeled so many times, we're still talking about from essentially nineteen thirty-eight to today. There's been several add-ons. There's been an east and a west wing and a two, three remodels and it's. How do I say this as technically as I can? It's a hodgepodge of projects. And we're getting ready to add on another very significant hodge to the podge. So it's. It's the adding on with the existing spaces to work around the structural issues that we face, even with the second floor project that we're doing today. We've had some structural issues that we've had to work around. And it's not necessarily work around, but it's having to keep in place so that we don't trigger that. Twenty twenty-one code that we have to start updating the structure of the building. Which then, that cost is going to increase exponentially. So we have looked at it. And, you know, as far as utilizing the existing space. They've got people put in every nook and cranny they can get right now. Trent and everybody has really tried to do a good job in keeping the building very much manageable and maintainable. But there are people put in every nook and cranny right now in the courthouse. And we're about to do a little more, put a few more people in on the fourth floor, so.
And you, and I don't know if you know this, but do you have kind of a rough estimate on with like the second? For the new courthouse and everything that we've done, what is the total cost of that that the community has put in?
So. The cost for the second floor courtroom for Judge Finger, we're sitting at like about three point eight million dollars. And that one was also with the recovery funds that we received. As far as any of the other maintenance and renovation projects, that would be something very much that we'd have to talk to Trent about. He's done several just. Housekeeping projects and maintenance projects. He's done several projects with the flooring, the paint. He, he's done a real good job of keeping that building very much looking very nice for how old it is. Um, I know he spent lots of time and effort on the existing HVAC and chiller system. I mean. Trent's put in some significant effort to keep that thing running to the. And I know that there's been concerns about the level of comfort that it provides. But the level of effort that Trent's put into keeping that thing. As comfortable as it is is pretty astounding. So he would have to provide us some cost on that, but it is increasing from what we're currently doing.
You know, the.
Sorry.
Just to piggyback off of what Sarah said. There's security. You asked why? Security was your answer. Is it not possible to accommodate the security concerns that are needed in that current courthouse? Can we not have secure parking? That, that seems like it's something that would be very feasible to do. We're looking at a hundred and forty-nine million dollars for a new judicial complex. That. Honestly, I think the majority of the public is either. Indecisive about or has a strong opinion. But when you look at spending a hundred and forty-nine million. Dollars of taxpayer dollars, it's something that people really don't want, can't get behind. It's hard to. Sit here and get behind it and not say, what else can we do with that, with that proposed money? To make this courthouse. Work for everybody that's there and the community. And I think in doing that, you have a proposed twenty-six million dollars in renovation for the existing courthouse. So we're already. Looking at putting twenty-six million. That puts us at, what is that, a hundred and thirteen million dollars to. Play with, if you will. To make this, uh, make the existing courthouse. Worthy of. Being secure, being able to. House the things that it needs to. We've heard from multiple judges saying that our fifth. Judge probably isn't coming anytime soon. We've also heard that more and more of these. Uh, court cases are being done virtual. This is going forward. I see a lot of this stuff happening virtual. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, who knows what we're doing in person? If anything. So there's a lot of things that I think are. Kind of up for debate here. But it's. I, I think that we could end up being a hundred million dollars ahead. By taking care of the things that could be in need to be taken care of that courthouse.
I, I hundred percent agree with you. I think that. That to spend that out there when they're with the community as a whole, from what I've heard, from what I've been contacted, is against. I would rather. Take that money and build something else for the community as a whole. And do the twenty-six million dollar renovation that we have because. Even the judges, you know, we talk about, uh, safety and stuff, but the judges. Their whole idea is they don't want to move. So. I'm a hundred percent near court on that. Let's, let's do what we need to do. At the courthouse as it is and let's spend whatever that difference is on building something for the community. Like an event center or something like that that we can all use and the community can use as a whole. And they would be for it. And it would be good for the community.
I, I agree. The way we've had six months now to kind of process this and digest this. And. For me, simplifying it to the most basic senses. You know, it's been pointed out multiple times. It's not our money. We're stewards of taxpayer money. We all understand that. Nobody needed to point that out to anybody else. We understand that. We understand our duties and our responsibilities. But. As you sit here, if you were to ask. Get a survey size from Artigia in Carlsbad, do you want the courthouse to move? I would say most people would be indifferent. It may be seventy, thirty that move great. I, I, it's. It seems to be that the most vocal tend to be the ones in opposition, the ones that don't speak up, tend to be the ones that. Are in favor or maybe not necessarily in favor, just truly don't have an opinion. And that's kind of the way that. The society as a whole is now. But if you took it a step further and said, okay, would you like this courthouse to be moved and it's going to cost a hundred and forty-nine million dollars? It's taxpayer money. Then people start getting. A little bit more defensive and saying, wait a minute, that money could be spent elsewhere. That money could be used for other things that we're more. On board with. So to do something, to spend that amount of money for something that truly is divisive. At best is a really hard bill for me to spend.
If I can. First, I'd like to say thank you. You did everything we asked and got all of the research done as we had asked. And I think it was done very well. The two plans presented were done very, very well, very well thought out. So I do appreciate all of that. With that. Sarah's question is something that I just, it's the same question I had in my head this entire time. If the current facility users say that there's plenty of space. I have a hard time. To both points, spending that amount of money. I do agree with him. I think if you talk to the bulk of the county, when he says they're indifferent, I would tend to agree with that. I think the most folks that I talked to said, we don't want it torn down. We want it utilized. So I, I think that's where you would start having interesting discussions with folks. But for me, I have a hard time wanting to spend this amount of money. Now my question would be. I guess could be another path is I a hundred percent agree with us to renovate. Outside of it has to be done. I know we've done quite a bit of work because I remember building on it. I mean, I know we've done a roof recently if I'm not mistaken. I know we put a boiler in probably before anyone else. I was probably the only one that did that at three, four hundred thousand because we didn't have the money at the time. We were scraping it together to, to make that happen. So I know there's been some things done, but the exterior is a must and we've got to get on that right away. So if we were to do all of that. Once the jail is moved, once the admin is moved, I think then in five years, maybe we reassess where we're at. What does the courthouse look? Because if I was going to add something to the current courthouse, I don't know that I would add. Again, what you presented is incredible and it looks amazing. Maybe we just have to add a, a floor at that point to extend working space. I don't know what five years looks like from now. I think getting the jail out of the way, dealing with the takedown of the jail, then all of a sudden alleviates a lot of the other issues of parking downtown. Before we start this, just my thought.
It would very much help the logistics of the project within a reevaluation once the parking is addressed and once the detention center is moved. That is very much a big first step and we have very much accommodated the current operations. Our sheriff's department do a very good job with the current facility. Billy and his crews and staff do a very good job and we've provided the holding and we've provided ulterior access and with kind of as Commissioner Bowen allotted to. If it was decided to take. The funding necessary to do the exterior and a little extra to do some. Uh, additional work to the exterior, we could provide that secure parking. We could provide some secure access. And very make, make the building more secure for what we're currently seeing for some of the. Issues that we're currently worried about. And like you said, really much prioritize something that we want to do. So that's. We very much accommodate that and accomplish that. So I know my previous answer was, oh, we got to do this. Well, no, we can very much accommodate and we. And the projects that we're doing and are planned. Accommodate the current operations. So. We would need to do some things. I know Trent's working real. We've been trying to convert the chiller systems and they're kind of outdated. So we'd need to update those and do that as a phased project. The exterior, obviously, an increased security project. But I mean, other than that, I mean, they're, they're very much in a space that can be utilized for the next. Five to ten years.
And something that also, you know, I was reminded of when we held the town halls. I believe Guy Lutman and Jack Valpoto, who are both, you know, prior county commissioners. Had talked about the construction of like the sheriff's office. They had purchased this land with the goal of building, you know, taking kind of it in a step approach as tribal law. You know, I think, and I think I made it clear, detention has always been kind of my number one priority. I know that it needs to be done. I think we could definitely move forward with our plans for detention and admin and as Commissioner Henry said, reevaluate this, knowing that we always have. The space, you know, to do that if needed. But I agree. I, I'm concerned about how people enter and exit the building at the courthouse right now.
One of the things of concerns that I have that I don't, you know, that we haven't really discussed and, and but you brought it up. Was the fact that there's going to be a bond issue to fund something that the community. Even though it doesn't affect, as you said, the property tax is still the idea of obligating the county to a bond issue. And I have concerns about that.
One thing is abundantly clear. Is I think the rumor of bulldozing the place and turning it into a bed and breakfast and finally permanently put to rest.
I would hope the community knew that that was never going to happen with this commission anyway.
You know, as far as a community center, what's in mind if we. Go with the plan and move the courthouse, is that a courthouse, the old courthouse will virtually be a community center. And as far as the first effect, if we do that major construction down there. And all of the weight and all of the concrete, something that you haven't addressed that I've heard before is a very shallow water table. If we start adding all that weight, we could run into some significant problems down the road that would be possibly insurmountable.
Yeah, but if you're going to drive piles to bedrock, you're not going to have that kind of issue.
Provides the opportunity to overcome challenges.
But how, how deep is the, the, I mean, I know the water table's ten to fifteen, twelve to fifteen foot, you said, or something like that, but how deep is the water?
Uh, we would have to drive the piles to forty-five to fifty feet per the geotechnical report.
That's just like a lot of construction in an already very condensed space.
It's just like building a bridge.
Yeah, I, I love the, the. The idea of the expansion there, but I don't think it's. The most feasible just timeline and whatever due to downtown. So.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? Please, sir. To dispel any of the conspiracy theories that I'm all about moving the courthouse, I'm not. I'm not sure where all that came from. I agreed with some people before that when, when folks wanted to do that, that I was like, okay. Yeah, sure. Do a benefit in this way and this way. My job is security. Specifically for the judges and then secondary, the folks that are in the courthouse. I have been complaining for years and years about secure parking for our judges. It's, it's, it's completely untenable that they have to walk out to their, their vehicles after sending people to prison. Without being in a secure parking area. So I, I'm to the point now where I just, I have to like demand that we, we have to have this. The judges have to be secure in their parking. We will make security work no matter what happens. That's y'all's decision. That's not my decision. I don't have any input on it whatsoever. Except that. There are some things we can do and it sounds like we're leaning towards keeping the existing courthouse. There are some things we can do. To make it where it is accessible to the public. Yet we have security in place. There, we can move things around. We can do some different things. So. That's the conversation I would like to have and be involved in. But. First and foremost, secure parking for our district court judges. They deserve that. And I think that is crucial. I think it's been brought up several times by Jason. I've been jumping up and down on it for years. So. That's my two cents. Um, I'm, whatever decision y'all make, we will make it work. We will make security work.
Well, I, I think that we have. Thank you, Sheriff. And thank you for the cooperation with whatever happens moving forward. We have. Originally, I think the. The, the plan was for all of us to digest this information and, and. Have a couple of town halls. But I, I think after the information that we received, we've. All been in communication with the public on this for the past six months or so. I don't see it. I personally don't see it necessary for town halls. Going forward. I think this is something that could be brought back to the next meeting for us to go on.
I mean, my whole deal is, I mean. I think that, that we hold off on doing anything like that except we just do, I think I like the idea of doing renovations and stuff. Let's spend that money to do the renovations and let's hold off on making a decision whether, you know, some. Future time like. and let's hold off on making a decision whether, you know, some future time, like, like Commissioner Henry said, we always have an option. But right now, let's, let's not spend that money, and let's do the renovations that we need to do, and let's, uh, let's see where we can spend that money to, to benefit the community in other ways. That's what I would like to see, and I would make a motion to that if we can.
I would, before we start making motions, I'd very much agree.
Well, it's not, it's not an action.
It's not an item. Yeah, it's not a presentation.
I think there's an awful lot of good information, and an awful lot of stuff that wasn't available before the last. I think there are a lot of people around town that are very much in favor of one side or the other that didn't speak up through the last process. Before we hold the vote in November, one way or the other, now we've got three options, you know? Courthouse here, courthouse out there, a punt. I think we ought to have a town hall and, and get the feeling of the public one more time to give some of those people that were quiet the first time around to speak up.
Yep. I mean, I think, I think one of the big complaints was that I think the public felt that they were caught off guard maybe the first time. And so, I would be in favor of holding at least one town hall to just present this, you know, our studies and, and allow people the opportunity to voice, you know, their opinions on it.
Okay.
I think I'm good with whatever direction we want to go, if we want to do a town hall or whatever. I guess my question would be, what are we bringing back to vote? We have a tabled motion at the moment.
So.
So, the tabled motion is just.
What we bring back is we would bring back the tabled motion from May 7th to untable that, and then essentially make the decision on what was previously put on the agenda. And then we could bring back whatever action item in addition you'd like us to. Right, sir? Is that right?
You don't want to.
And really, we might be able to do it all in one action item that we'd already tabled, so we might be able to do it all in that one action item.
Because I, what I don't want leaving here is to have the same amount of folks getting fired up over information that's not exactly accurate.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's what, again, I'm all for town halls. I love town halls. When we present that out there, I would like to be very clear on what information we have, how it worked, so that we don't have the, they're going to tear it down, so we don't have the, all that other stuff that got folks really upset. There's no reason for that.
Yes, sir.
We're having an election right now that has everyone upset, and we need to stop. We need to back up and make sure folks understand the intent so that we don't continue to.
Right.
But I don't know how to do that.
Well, we are very much working with Savannah, and Savannah's doing a real good job of making sure we get the information that we presented out, so it will be the intent that we will post what was presented today separately from just the normal posting of the meeting, just so that the information, the, the presentation is out to the public.
And I guess that would be my biggest thing is the, the information, your presentation was, had a great amount of information. It was really well put together. I think that having that put out there allows everybody that didn't watch this, wasn't here today to, they have access to get to that information. They can do it on their own time. My issue with town halls, especially after the last two held, is they kind of become echo chambers, where one person feeds off of the next person and continues to compound. And I, I don't feel like they're very productive. I, I, while I don't.
I think.
It's hard because we can't discuss anything. So, I understand that.
So, if the information's available, people can reach out to us as they've done in the past. We can address those things. And then when we come back, we can have a vote. That, that's, that's just my two cents, but we'll see.
Stand for your directions.
If, if, whatever way we go, if we do town halls, what I would also like is that information in there, that there is this third option that we just leave alone, do the renovations, and then we readdress this in five. I think that's what's going to be important, because if folks just see this, they think we're deciding on two things.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's what I'm worried about, is I want to be very.
We can put that together by next week, right, Amy?
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
I want to be very, very clear on the options that, that we're actually looking at, so that folks don't think, oh, it's this or that. That's not the case. There's actually other things that we've discussed.
See, I think that that's exactly right, Mr. Henry, is that there's so many people are going to look at it and not understand that there's a third option to just do the renovations and not do, which is a very good option, in my estimation.
Let's do that. Let, let's do this compromise. Instead of holding two town halls, let's hold one town hall next week. Shoot for Wednesday of next week. Can we, do we want to do it at the courthouse again, like we have done the, did the past one? Do we want to do it?
Let's, let's do it at someplace that can fit, people fit a little better.
Okay.
Let us, let us come up with a venue and we'll, we'll schedule it and, and get a time, so next Wednesday?
Let's do next Wednesday.
Evening, 6:00?
Yeah, and, and we'll hold it in Carlsbad. Sorry, John.
Is there a town hall that we want to call? What's the difference? Because to Sarah's point, I don't want to just sit there and listen. I would like to be able to have talk.
Public.
To me, that's a better, I think the discussion is important.
I agree with that whole part of.
We'll work on the format of.
Yeah, because to sit there and just listen does us no good, because they don't even understand what we're thinking if we can't ever speak. And I hate, that is not a town hall to me. Interaction is a town hall to me.
Understood. So, so let's do that, and then after that, we can have this come to the next meeting.
Which will be November 5th, November 5th.
So, so what we'll do when we publish that, we will be very clear that there are three alternatives. Number one, move it. Number two, leave it where it is. And number three, the hybrid that says we do minimal revision to, to take care of the security issues.
Yes.
Yes.
And that, that, that becomes the thing that drives the discussion.
And we're going to do the face, outside faces.
We can also post a notice of quorum and, no decision won't be made. Yeah, no decision will be made, and we're, we're gonna, we can do that.
All right.
So, we can have that interaction. We've got to have the interaction.
There's your, there's your direction.
I don't want to ever have another town hall maybe where I just.
Sit there.
Listen, because they don't know what you're thinking. They're just telling you what they're thinking, but, but they kind of need to know how we're thinking also.
Yeah, opinions are putting out. All right, let's get this meeting started now.
Good job.
Jason, a very good present presentation.
A lot of work.
Yeah, a lot of work. Okay, let's move back to the timed agenda and go into public comments. I have one comment that was sent in to be read. Sent in by Mrs. Faith Johnston. Dear Commissioners, it appears that the courthouse is once again on your agenda. Please take into consideration the wishes and opinions of the populace of Eddy County and spend the money necessary to improve and update our beautiful, historical, iconic courthouse, and leave it where it should be located, right in the center of Carlsbad. Thank you. Sincerely, Faith Johnston. Do we have any other public comments?
Good morning, esteemed Commissioners. My name is Kristin Gamboa. I just wanted to introduce myself formally. I am the new executive director for the Carlsbad Department of Development, the C D O D. And Ernie Carlson is one of my lovely board chairs on my executive committee. So, I just formally wanted to introduce myself. Just wanted to further reiterate just the fact that what I want to do here for economic development in greater Carlsbad and Eddy County is to bridge any gaps that we have, create closer partnerships with the city, with the county, even with Artesia, even with Lee County, to help build our region out better, for economic growth for all of us. So, just wanted to say hi and introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're very happy to have you.
Commissioners. This may not be anything that is going to really come into play, but I did want to just talk about one thing about the, uh, the project. If there is. Oh, I'm sorry. David Finger, District Court Judge. In regards to the renovations, I know there's been talk about moving the court for, you know, I think it was like 12 to, or 18 to 24 months. I know one of the locations I was talking about was here. What I'd heard was that possibly we'd have two courtrooms in that scenario, and I just, I'm going to express a, a very strong concern about that. I just don't think we can have four judges operating with two courtrooms. That's just not going to be feasible. We're having enough trouble with four judges and three courtrooms. So, if there is that, that move to look for a temporary court, court facility, I think the minimum we need is three. And that two is just, just not going to be a, a very feasible project. But with that being said, I want to thank you all for your communication with us on, on this project and your commitment to this project, and we really do appreciate that.
Thank you, Judge. Ms. Catherine.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Catherine Brown, State Representative for this area. Just a couple of thoughts. The first is that, just to let you know, I've been working on some legislation for several years now to get a public-private partnership statute into our, into our code. And what this would do is give you a statutory foundation for building a parking garage where the current detention center is. Some, uh, local governments kind of come up, come into having some P3 arrangements, but right now, there's not a clear statutory authority for doing that. So, I've been working on that, thinking ahead that this might be needed some time here in Eddy County at the detention center location. So, I'll continue to work on that. We thought we had it last session, but the Senate committee that was assigned to hear the bill didn't call it up. Other than that, we think we had the vote, so. And then secondly, just a, just a, from my mind, a clarification at least that the courthouse discussion is not about moving the courthouse. It's about moving the courts and the staff members and so forth. I love this courthouse. When I came to Carlsbad as a young attorney, I was absolutely stunned by the beauty of that building. And it's going to stay. It's, it's going to be there no matter what. So, the question is, do we move the courts? And I just wanted to pass that off, that thought on. Thank you.
Anybody else? Move to service awards. Cecilia Salcido, DWI, 10 years. More than Massimo.
Phil's time is just here. Marlene Arnold, Public Works, 10 years. And Ms. Anna Garcia, Assessor's Office, 5 years.
Quick break for pictures.
Okay, we'll move back into our trailing agenda. Move to item number two, approve commission meeting minutes for October 1st, 2024. Is there any items that anybody needs to pull for further discussion? Look for a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for October 1st, 2024.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Upstein.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to the expense approval report for September 2024. Look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Item number three, proclamation in support of Eddy County DWI program celebrating the National Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st. Ms. Brandy Mendoza.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brandy Mendoza. I am the prevention educator for the DWI program. I am here today to request your support to proclaim October 23rd through the 31st as National Red Ribbon Week. It's an important opportunity to promote drug-free lifestyles throughout the community. Red Ribbon Week is the national, nation's longest and largest drug prevention awareness program in the U.S., created to honor DEA agent Enrique Kiki Camarena, who lost his life in the fight against drug trafficking. This aims to increase awareness, foster education, and encourage community participation in drug prevention activities. We understand the impact substance abuse has on our community. The Eddy County DWI program, along with the Carlsbad Coalition, has committed to promote a safe, healthy, drug-free environment. The proclamation I am presenting to you today calls on all citizens, businesses, and schools in Eddy County to support a drug-free lifestyle. The National Red Ribbon Week theme for this year is life is a movie, film drug free. Local coffee shops in both Carlsbad and Artesia have agreed to display a Red Ribbon Week sticker on their cups, as well as digital billboards and radio ads running in both Carlsbad and Artesia. These are the bracelets that will be passed out in the schools. One of the middle schools is doing a short video every day with the students, and one day is, I'm the director of my life. I choose to be drug free. We are seeking your approval to officially recognize October 23rd through the 31st as National Red Ribbon Week in Eddy County.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
I would love to make that motion.
Move to approve that.
Have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Brandy.
Thank you.
Number four, cradle point, router purchase, budget adjustment. Mr. Cage.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. What we've done is spent an enormous amount of. What we've done is spent an enormous amount of money, thanking for that, to be able to get our technology up to modern standards for our deputies to be out there doing the work that they need to do. Unfortunately, we've been limited by bandwidth and connectivity, and a lot of the equipment that we have purchased has been, it's been a struggle for it to actually come to work at its peak optimum capability. I've got deputies who come and they end up having to park their vehicles right next to the building to try and get their videos downloaded. It's a mess. Fortunately, I've got a rock star that works for me, Lieutenant Amy Dugas, who found a remedy for this and found a very cost-effective remedy. This cradle point technology, we've already tested it. It is amazing. We are downloading at lightning speed. The deputies can be more productive because they don't have to sit around waiting. It's almost like what we did, we put this stuff in the cars, in the units, so they could be out working instead of in the office writing reports. Well, guess what? Now they're having to be at the office downloading data. And it's almost longer timeframe than writing the reports. So we've been a victim of our own progress, I guess. But for this price here, the basically $220,000, this brings everything to fruition. And it's a safety factor as well because of communications. I think, I've been talking to Josh about it. Josh is very interested in this as well. And this is also going to, it, we're getting a lot of bang for the buck. And I don't, I can't recall the exact numbers. We're getting a huge credit for that, to be able to use this. So this is what we're here looking for. I don't like coming in after a budget's been approved to ask for things. However, this was something we just didn't have at budget time. So my apologies for that. So I'm here to answer any questions. And if I can't answer them, Lieutenant Dugas can.
Questions? Look for a motion to approve the cradle point router purchase.
I'm going to move. Second.
Have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank y'all, appreciate it as always.
Moving into the resolution and agreement consent agenda. There any items that anybody needs to pull? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Move to item number six, the travel request consent agenda. Again, anything for further discussion or items to pull? Look for a motion to approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
I'm going to move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Beard?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Do not have any emergency business? Do we have any legislative comments, announcements, or updates? Elected official department comments, announcements, updates?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just a quick update on the two projects that we have doing. The HVAC project, they've got pretty much all the equipment installed on the first floor. They're starting to work their way up to the roof. Electrician's coming in this week. It's on schedule, so we're happy with that. The other is the remodel for the security area. It's on schedule, they're working on the special system. So that's like the computer stuff, the doors, things like that, trying to get all that worked out. The electrical's over there, so everything's coming right along without us.
Very good. Thank you. Any other elected official department heads?
I just want to remind everybody that we are currently voting. So last week was the beginning of it, started last Tuesday. I don't know if you guys were interested in some numbers, but we mailed out 1,231 absentee ballots in Artesia just for the four days. We had 822 people go vote in the Artesia sub-office. And in Carlsbad, we've had 1,503 people vote. Just this week is eight to five. Saturday starts our extended early voting hours, so we'll start voting on Saturdays from eight to four. And then starting next Monday, it will be eight to six p.m., Monday through Friday. So, and I also got new customized stickers. I don't know if any of you guys have voted, but I think they're pretty cool.
Very cool.
Greetings again. I think maybe last time I made comments, I might have presented a bleak outlook of our personnel. We are down nine people right now. However, we're talking about nine out of 80, which if you look at the rest of the, look across the state, look across the nation, that's actually pretty darn good. And, and to add to that, we have nine certified candidates that have applied with us, and we have 12 uncertified. So we're not in danger of being undermanned, I can tell you that right now. And of the folks that we have had leave, they were good reasons for them leaving with a few issues that we had to deal with. So I wanted to just bring that up because I sat and thought about it and I went, wow, that didn't sound real good. We're in good shape, y'all are in good shape. And it shows the support that you give us. That's why people want to come to work here. So moving on from that, we were, as you know, I'm on the Board of Trustees for Southeast New Mexico College, and we had a board meeting last night. But Operation Hard Target, I can't stress enough how important I feel this is, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback from the community. Operation Hard Target being our training that we provide for the community for being able to respond and understand how to act in a active shooter program. We want to make ourselves hard targets, is basically where that came from. We did a training for the college, Southeast New Mexico College. We did our initial training at the sheriff's office to give an intro, basically. And we had probably about 15 people there. Lieutenant Kane Wyatt is our lead instructor for Operation Hard Target, and I received a lot of praise for him last night of how that program went. We're going to bring the program now that we've done the pilot. We're going to take it to the college and train all the college personnel that want to attend. I'm not sure if President Beardmore's going to make it mandatory like we do here at the county. I hope so. I think it's a great benefit. So another part of Operation Hard Target is we've received a grant of $13,000 to purchase these kits, and these are basically stop-the-bleed kits. We purchased over 200 of them. It has basic, it has tourniquets, it has basic first aid items that if there were, and it doesn't just have to be active shooter, injuries of any type, we, these can be utilized for that. Each deputy is going to have them out in the field, obviously, and we have some more advanced equipment than that. But we're also going to provide it to each of the, at least one to each departments within the county. I think this is a great idea because you never know. We hope nothing's going to happen and we prepare for that. I guess if you've noticed downstairs, Roberta had the foresight to think about security because of some issues that have happened in the past. And we'll have a deputy assigned here once we have all the security measures put in place for this building to protect our valuable, most valuable resource, our personnel. So that's the updates I have for that. I'm going to be attending upcoming, and none of this is a county expense. This is all stuff that's paid for by outside entities. But I'm going to be attending a National Sheriff's Executive Board Retreat and Summit in Texas at a ranch where we're going to discuss biggest priority of border issues. And I'll be attending that, and we'll hopefully get some insight into what we, things we can do and things that are going on. After that, I'll be going to another function in California for Claremont University, which is, they teach a lot of, about the U.S. Constitution. And I'm an alumni from there, so whenever they have another class come in, which I was happy to sponsor too, sheriffs from Oklahoma, from the National Sheriff's Association, to get, be accepted into their fellowship. So that's what we have going on. I'm excited about the upcoming election, I hope. Everybody vote. I can't say that I don't, I don't care who you vote for, because I do. It's not my business who you vote for. That's the bottom line. But please, I encourage everybody listening, please go vote. I know everybody sitting up here is going to vote. And that, it's a great privilege for us in this country to be able to vote like we do. So again, thank you for your support. When y'all say public safety is number one here, it's not just lip service. I appreciate it. And all my deputies appreciate it, and I'm sure the community does as well, so. Anyway. Thanks, Sheriff. Move on.
Anybody else? Just a couple things. You'll notice that Roberta is not here today. We have just started our audit. And, oh, she made it. She slipped in. So we're glad that she could join us, but it'll be hectic for a while. Also, I just wanted to let you know that when we post the presentation, we will also do a headline to disclose that there were other discussions by the commission about a third option. So when it goes to the public, they'll know, they'll know about the discussion here today, which should prep better for the, you know, better disclosure for the town hall. Lastly, I just want to thank Mr. Burns and those who supported him and consulted with him for putting together that really, really thoughtful and well-documented presentation. Thank you all. Okay, any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Beard?
I haven't keep a lot of praise on Jason yet, so I will. That was quite a presentation that he has put together. Finally got a tie on him. And I like the color.
Wonder where he got it?
As far as the third option, the thing that's really motivated me all the way through all this will remain there. And that is the general public still might have unfettered access to that building. And I'll let it go with that.
I'll be very, very brief because I know we've got a lot of other things going on, but I do want to reiterate everything we've heard about voting. Please go out and vote. It's so crucial to everything. You know, I was listening to, there's a church I listen to on a regular basis when I used to attend when I lived somewhere else, and they gave an amazing sermon on the importance of voting. They didn't say, "Vote for this party or that party, don't vote this way or that way," but just what, why it's so important to vote. And why it's so important to understand whom you're voting for. I think, just like I said, I don't want our comments of the courthouse to get all stirred up into, understand who and why you're voting. So often, we watch news and all those things, and we fall into the, oh, well, they have a horrible personality. And that's on both sides, I can now say that because you can't just pick one. Everybody's saying that about everybody. Personality, it's really irrelevant. Last time I voted for the most popular personality, I was a senior in high school. And I voted for myself. But that's the last time I voted for that, right? I mean, what's most important to me is what are these policies going to do for the country? What are these policies going to do for our state? What are these policies going to do for our county? Not who do I want to go have lunch with. It's just not on the ballot. So please, when you're voting, take the time to educate yourself. There's a ton of folks that are on the ballot that have a voting record. Understand what they have voted for, what they have stood for, and not just what the TV commercials are telling you they stood for or valued. Please take that time because it is such a privilege to vote. And it is so important to vote. Whatever direction you vote on or for, please go vote. Those that say, "Oh, well, there's not a good option on the ballot period, I'm not going to vote." What a terrible thing. You will never have a perfect candidate. It doesn't exist. I'm sorry, it doesn't. But there's candidates that you most align with, that you think will have the most best intentions for all those things I said, whether it be local, state, or federal level. So please go exercise your vote, please educate yourself on that vote. All of us have cell phones. If you have questions, if you're on the ballot and you have a question for somebody, call them and ask them. It's okay. I take calls all the time, I know everyone else takes calls all the time. Call and ask questions, say, "Hey, what is this? Why do you do this?" Whatever. I think we would welcome those as well. So please do that. Kind of, I'm pretty excited about the numbers. I mean, I voted on the second day, which is highly unusual for us. We're usually on-the-day voters, but I think there was 400 at that time, so it feels like about 200 a day-ish, so.
It was over 700 in Carlsbad the first day.
Oh, yeah. That's, so that means people are taking this serious and going out and exercising their right to vote. So I really do greatly appreciate that. The other thing is, again, thank you, Mr. Burns, for the presentation. What I most appreciate about this is I think now we can have real discussion, and I hope that at the town hall, that's what we have, is real discussion on what are the best options in here and why, rather than all the other discussion that maybe we had at times. Now we have answers for a lot of those questions, so now it can move to a discussion. And I think that's what it needs to be. That's what you expect, should expect from us on all levels, is what's the real discussion so we can make the absolute best decision for our county when it comes to the courthouse? So I do look forward to really good discussion so that we can make sure we're moving forward in whatever direction. Go Bulldogs.
Put that out there.
Number one right now, right?
Number one. Yeah, we should be number one right now.
Mr. Carlson?
I just want to thank everybody. Also, I do want to make sure that everybody understands today is the last day for filing your income tax return for 2023. So if you haven't filed it yet, it's probably getting pretty late.
Thanks for the reminder.
Again, want to thank everyone that was involved in this study. And as Commissioner Henry said, you did everything that we tasked you to do, Jason and your team, so thank you very much. I'm super excited that you've had this many numbers for people, you know, coming in to vote. I just want to remind all of our voters that regardless of what your beliefs are, to be respectful when you're there and be respectful of our staff. And I appreciate everyone coming in on Saturdays and working late to 6 o'clock in the evening so that people have the opportunity to vote. So thank you, Kara. And please pass that along to all of your staff. So thank you, Kara, and please pass that along to all of your staff, and that's all I have.
I will keep it brief as well. Again, Burns, thank you for what you put together, it was a presentation that included everything that was brought up from all of us, and I think the concerns from the prior two town hall meetings that we had. And then lastly, just to echo everybody else on voting, vote. I was one of the 700 that voted on the first day, and it was kind of nice and refreshing to walk in there and there be a line. Normally, when I walk in on the first day, I walk in, I walk out, and it's a 30-second process. It was kind of exciting to walk in and have to wait a couple minutes to get my ballot, and I, I like to see that, so I hope that Eddie County continues to turn out and let our voices be heard. New Mexico needs us to turn out, more than just about anywhere else. New Mexico needs our core of the state to turn out and pass their ballots. So with that, remind everybody that we are headed to the groundbreaking ceremony for the Eddie County complex, which includes the jailhouse or the, in jail?
Detention.
Detention center, thank you. That's at 1502 Corales Drive. So with that, that's all I got.